Hello, and welcome to a special edition of Up Close on ME TV. I'm Charles Clapsaddle, Station Manager for Manatee Educational Television. And we're very privileged to have with us today Ms. Karen Carpenter, the Chair of the Manatee County School Board. Ms. Carpenter, thank you so much for joining us, and I appreciate you taking the time out of your very busy day to talk about some critical issues that are facing the school board and the district.
Thank you, Charles. We really appreciate the support of ME TV in getting the word out. As most people seem to know, we are facing a number of challenges at the school district, and I want people to know that we're dealing with them aggressively, we're finding out what the problems are, and we're fixing them, so that we can focus on our primary mission, which is educating children.
Now, and you are dedicated to educating children, and you know, your background and experience is really relevant to that. But the most important issue, I think, which is facing this district, is some financial woes that have kind of befell the district most recently. And what I could like to do, if possible, is kind of take us through chronologically what has happened. And this all came to pass around early September, is that correct?
That's correct. That's correct. Apparently, there was a significant budget shortfall in last year's budget that affected us going forward on our reserve fund balance, that the board did not know about. The superintendent, and I think the senior staff, knew about it early in August, but we did not get the news until September 7th, which was a Friday. And it was a surprise. By, to his credit, the former superintendent met with the media, the newspapers, and revealed what had gone on, and explained his--
Perspective.
--explained his perspective. But by the following Monday, when we were supposed to approve the budget and have a board meeting on September 10th, the public, and staff, and teachers, and parents, and families, were rightly angry. The superintendent submitted his-- former superintendent submitted his resignation that evening by letter, and we were thrown really into confusion. There was a seven-hour meeting, it didn't get over until 12:45, I remember it well. And we had to appoint an interim, acting interim superintendent, we had to figure out a plan of action quickly as to how to deal with this, and then figure out what to do about our budget, which we were supposed to approve. So, all of this took 24/7 for quite a period of time for us to look at this. And I think that, excuse me, we do have some action steps that we have in place that are taking care of this.
Well, obviously, the board had to move not only quickly, but very efficiently, you know, to kind of counteract, you know, the curveball that, you know, that you had to deal with. And there were some specific requirements. Obviously, the fund balance was depleted, and there is a state mandate, you know, that a fund balance has to be maintained, and you had to go through the state and deal with that, correct?
We had to get some permission from the state to, for them to approve a lower fund balance than we were able to come up with. We also had to, that night, because the statute requires, we have a superintendent in place.
Correct.
So, we had to appoint a superintendent, and I know during the meeting, I looked at a couple of the senior staff, and they shook their heads, they didn't want the job. And fortunately, for a short period, Assistant Superintendent Robert Gagnon was willing to step in.
Correct.
But it's a lot more work than we, and we want him to be focusing on the importance of, the good news in the district, which is teaching and learning.
And which is, you know, something that we want to take a few moments to talk about. And I think that's a critical thing. But you were very fortunate in your selection of a long-term interim superintendent--
Correct.
--and working with Whit Blanton, you had a great selection of individuals, and you finally selected Dr. Gaylor, who is the former superintendent of Charlotte County Schools, to be the interim superintendent. And Dr. Gaylor came on about when?
October 15th. Dr. Gaylor was, his name was provided to us along with two others, by Dr. Blanton from the Florida School Board Association. Immediately after the September 10th, I called our colleagues at the Florida School Board Association and said, "Help." You know, "We need an interim, how can you help us during this process, we have budget issues." I mean, this is when you call in people to help. You know, you don't try to solve it yourself.
Correct.
And we're not trying to solve this ourselves. We're getting as much expert help from the outside as we can. Dr. Gaylor's background is very interesting.
It is.
He, 35 years as an educational leader in Florida, which is very important, because we have some unique ways, the state funds us, and we need to report. He was superintendent in Charlotte County when Hurricane Charlie blew through.
That's correct.
Provided, he provided incredible leadership there. What we have is not a weather hurricane here, but we have a budget and political hurricane. So, he's been very calming, I trust him, he knows what he's doing, he is committed, he's working through the holiday weeks period to find out really where additional problems might reside. We heard, we got a report, a good report, last night, that was a critical first step. You know, our new Chief Financial Officer, Mr. Boyer, presented us a very 19-page detailed report about unbudgeted items that we know we are going to have to cover, and we're going to have to find the money, and we're looking everywhere for that. These were unwelcome surprises, and apparently, this problem went back to 2009.
And I think that's the understanding, that there's been a policy, or some kind of unrequested type of procedure that's been ongoing. But if we could, just let's back up for a moment, because you're instrumental, and the board has been instrumental, in activating the audit of last year, which is going to be a critical part--
Correct.
--of discovering the errors of omission, we can use that phrase, of how the original mistake occurred. Can you tell us a little bit about how that was selected? And you got a lot of input from the community on that as well.
We did. The community has been wonderful in terms of their input. They come to board meetings, they send us emails, they send us calls, in terms of what they, they provide a lot of counsel, and that is very important. Some of them, like some of our employees, myself included, are angry, we feel that trust has been violated, and some employees, rightly so, are fearful. The forensic, it was obvious we needed a forensic audit, to find out who did what, and what happened, and what the level is, and then to make suggestions as to how this doesn't happen again.
Correct.
We can't have this happen again. Through the Audit Committee chaired by Jim Toomey, and I'm a member of the Audit Committee, we put out a bid process. We felt very strongly that we have special counsel, that anybody currently on staff, and had been on staff for a while, might have a special allegiances and not be as objective as we needed. So, we appointed a special counsel, Charles Harris from Trenton Kemper, and then they were charged by the board to get the forensic auditing firm, which has done interviews. We expect that forensic audit to come in mid-January, and we'll chew it over, figure out what needs to be done. So, in combination with the forensic audit inquiry of last year's $8 million problem, and then in combination with what Dr. Gaylor and Mr. Boyer has, and his staff have been able to find out, we should know really what the problems are--
And how to solve them.
--and how we correct them.
And how to solve them--
Exactly.
And not only solve the problem, but to ensure, not only for the district, but for this community as well, is how this could never happen again. Now, to hearken back to what you just talked about, in today's paper, and we're taping this, you know, early December, in today's paper, and both papers, Above the Fold, which is a thing, both on the, Braden and Harold, "School District Finds More Unbudgeted Item", and then also on the Herald Tribune, "Schools Facing Fresh Bad News." Now, as you mentioned, just briefly, there's a number of items that were unbudgeted, that were just not accounted for in the budget that was submitted. And some of these are very critical items, like IB programs, and overtime, and whatnot.
Utilities.
There's a wide variety of this. And you know, to Dr. Gaylor's credit, and Mr. Boyer's credit, is that they've actually done a very thorough, and continuing thorough, check on all of those items. And hopefully, you know, that's the end of the line, but you know, there might be other items that come up. On these specific things, and Dr. Gaylor addressed this in the newspaper, is that he's looking ways to solve this, and that's a wonderful thing. What do you think are the most important things that, you know, you as a school board member, and as the Chair, are going to need to know?
We need clarity, and completeness, and credibility in the data and the numbers that are presented to us. We need to know that they are complete and correct. What happened was, the budget wasn't complete. And in the past, apparently, if it was unbudgeted, there was enough money in the fund reserve to cover it. And so, that's what we think has happened, but we really won't have all of that full detail until the forensic audit--
Is complete.
--is in. We have a fiduciary responsibility to 45,000 children, to give them our best effort, so that they have good classrooms, and we've got wonderful schools, and wonderful teachers, and great things going on. We also have a responsibility to the taxpayer, to make sure, these are not, these are public funds.
Correct.
These don't belong to me, or you. They belong to the public, and we hold them in trust. And I think some of that trust was violated by the fact that we didn't have complete information. And I can understand, as I said before, why people are angry. Another step that's going to happen, and we think there may be a little bit more bad news coming out in January, and then I don't think that the forensic audit is going to be good news, because that's last year's problem. The Auditor General comes in to every school district every three years.
And this is from the state?
This is from the state.
This is from the state of Florida. This is a separate and completely different audit from the state of Florida, which is mandated by statute, is that correct?
That is correct. He comes in, and he looks at our operational efficiencies, he looks at our federal funds, and how we're managing those, and how we're managing the state funds, and issues a report. Those reports are on the Auditor General's website, and you can go back and see where we had problems, and that had to be corrected, et cetera. The critical thing is, when an audit comes in, or a report that, from last night, from Dr. Gaylor and Mr. Boyer, if you get a forensic audit, an auditor general report, or a Plano report, we need to monitor that, and to know it's been fixed.
Right.
And because we can't just say, "Oh,"
Somebody else will do it.
Somebody else, that's our job. That's our job. And we're very vigilant on this. Last week, I was at a Florida School Board Association meeting in Tampa, and I learned from my colleagues at Escambia, that they have a watchdog committee. We only had one watchdog in Manatee County, he's on the school board now, but in Escambia, there's a whole committee that's overseeing the sales tax, and that's what they call themselves. We need to be much more vigilant about this, about what's going on.
And one of the key things, and I think people have mentioned this, is that, you know, this district had procedures in place, you know, that were supposed to be, that fail-safe, to say, "Well, if this happens, then this internal audit, we'll watch it, and this audit committee will watch it." Well, a lot of things that were done, or as the result of, slipped through the cracks. And the discovery of these things kind of falls to the audit committees, well, what could have, or should have happened, and those are going to be coming out in the, probably the forensic audit.
Well, right, I think we need to strengthen our procedures. I think both, not only did some people fail in what they were doing, but our systems failed, you know, and we, it became like the perfect storm.
Well, that's a very good analogy.
And we have 25 people in finance, three internal auditors, an audit committee, external auditors, and the auditor general, and somehow, this slipped by. Now, maybe the auditor general, the last time he was in town was 2009, so maybe next year, he's going to find a lot of stuff that we, we need to tighten up and monitor it. I think it's critical that we monitor those procedures, and get regular updates and reporting, without micromanaging.
Correct.
And it's not our job to be in there adding and subtracting numbers.
Sure. And I think that's, you know, a very valid point, is that, you know, as a school board, as the Chair of the school board, and your other members, you're looking at, you know, bigger picture, you're looking and relying upon the expertise and the knowledge of those people who are preparing and providing you with information. Now, one of the other key things that's going to be involved in these next few months is, not only as the resolution of this audit's come out, but you're also in the process, Ms. Carpenter, of selecting a new superintendent. A superintendent's going to be coming in to, obviously, you know, some trouble, and some, you know, some internal problems that are going to be happening, but it's going to be a critical position as you move forward. And you have initiated some policies and steps forward to kind of outreach to the community. Can you tell us a little bit about that?
Well, I don't think we are going to attract any shrinking violet who doesn't want to address, you know, see this as an opportunity, as a candidate, to come in. There is a Superintendent Search Committee, which is comprised of about 25 community members. Each board member had four that we could appoint. Our first meeting is tonight, beginning at 6:00, and then we had some other members, a member from the school district administrative staff, the two unions, and the state college and the university, who added to that list. I know most of the people on that committee, and very grateful for their willingness to serve. And I think that they will bring, and I'm sure their names will be published, people can talk with them, it will be a sunshine committee. So, I can't talk with them about--
Exactly.
--who they're selecting, and they're not, they can't talk with each other. They will be advised by Dr. Blanton from the Florida School Board Association, and they will have a lot of work to do in January and February. Screening resumes, the resumes are due January 9th by 4:30 PM. We know from Dr. Blanton that there's some very good candidates who are interested in coming to Manatee County. We have some, despite these, what I call, "systems" problems, we have some great things going on--
And that's very true. You have a wonderful thing. But as you go into the school superintendent search--
Right.
--because Dr. Gaylor, you know, very graciously, when he stepped in as that interim, said that March is basically the time that he can extend to, is that correct?
Well, that's correct. And you know, that's really good news, because it gives us a tighter--
Deadline.
--tighter deadline, but also, our budgeting starts soon. And if we, it gives the new superintendent an opportunity to have some influence over the budget.
That's true.
And so, because the budget starts July 1st, we're almost halfway through the year. And so, this year is gone, and you know, we're, there's both good news and bad news. We're going to get this fixed, and we've got a lot of help on it, and we'll get a new superintendent, and we'll have new systems in place. That's what we're looking at.
And I think that's, you know, kind of a critical thing, that this community should know that you're not being very proactive in addressing each and every issue, problem, concern that is developing. You're very proactive in going after a forensic audit team, and seeking outside special counsel. As this news came up in the paper, you're addressing that, and also actively pursuing a new superintendent as well. But this is issues, as you related, that are systematic in nature. But there's a lot of great things that are happening in Manatee County schools, you mentioned at the very beginning. You're the largest employer, you know, you have 5,000, almost 5,000 employees, you're responsible for 43, almost 43,000 children, and you're a major community partner for organizations throughout Manatee County. There's a lot of great things that are happening. You have a wonderful staff, dedicated teachers--
Mm-hmm.
--and all of those things.
Absolutely.
And you know, I'd like to give you a moment, if you could, tell us a little bit about why this school district is going to succeed, and you know, what are those things that you see that are, that people should know about?
Well, I think we have great community partners. And I have to use the example of the fact that we, along with numerous other organizations, well exceeded our amount, I guess, we call tonnage, in the Stuff the Bus campaign.
That's very true.
A charitable outreach, all the school staff worked on this, our school buses were at all the Publix supermarkets, the 16 Publix supermarkets in Manatee County. We have a wonderful relationship with the Chamber of Commerce. They have been very helpful in getting the workforce funding equity formula adjusted, so that MTI gets more than 55%.
Which is a huge issue, you know, and thanks to our legislative delegation--
Exactly.
--and the people from the MTI Alumni Association, and the leadership there, that that funding has kind of been reconciled now.
Yes, yes, it's much better. We are a national model for career academies. And I was with Doug Wagner, who heads up the ACT Department, Adult Education, Career and Technical Training, and his team in Nashville for the National Conference, and we got the most awards--
That's terrific.
--for Braden River High School.
That's fantastic.
And so, so, we're, what those, that whole concept does, is of learning, is makes learning relevant, and really can excite the children in junior high and high school, also train them, give them certifications, and bring in business and industry to be partners. The--
Which is critical.
Yeah.
Which is, you know, the more buy-in that you have from the community, you know, the more involved that they get with, businesses get with schools, there's opportunities that abound for everyone.
And we are also, the Manatee Education Foundation is partnered with Getl Automotive, and next Tuesday, I think it is, they, the 11th, yeah, they will do their second quarterly awards to teachers.
And we did the first one, and it turned out excellent. They had over about 100 teachers, I believe--
Yeah.
--that they each one got a check, and it was fantastic. But I want to go back to the Stuff the Bus. Well, we were actually there when they unstuffed a bus. And the school district should be recognized, it was over 130,000 pounds--
30,000.
--new record of food that was donated to the Food Bank of Manatee County and the school district, and everyone that was involved with that, Publix, Meals on Wheels Plus, they should all be recognized for that, giving back to the community.
That's correct. And that 130,000 pounds was really 30% more than the prior year. That was a big jump.
That's a big jump.
A big jump. And I think it reflects a lot of energy, and positive energy. So, those are the things that we're trying to focus on, we'll get our systems and systemic issues in order. I don't have any question that our budget for next year will be correct, and complete, and a line item budget, and all the items will be in there, so that we don't have these kinds of surprises.
Well, and I think that's a key point that you mentioned, is a line item budget. So, you can see specifically and exactly, you know, what the budgeted amount is, where that fund is coming from. And I think that's a critical thing that should be included. As a matter of fact, Dr. Gaylor mentions that in one of these articles, that he wants to incorporate that into the future thing. But I want to give you a moment, if we can, because you did mention Assistant Superintendent Bob Gagnon, and his efforts on the district's behalf for the new core curriculum. And can you tell us a little bit about the progress that's being made on that?
Well, I think there's been a lot of progress in terms of getting more input from the schools and the teachers. What's happening with the schools, and we have 55 of them around the district, is wonderful. There are great things going on in the schools. The biggest problem we have is in our central administration, and we can get that fixed. But when you go into individual schools, as I do on a fairly frequent basis, we know that the energies that Bob and his team are putting in place for advancing teaching and learning as a focus of what we're doing is critical. He's also engaging more of the community at the early childhood level, because early learning--
That's a great idea.
--is really what counts, you know, the, all the data show--
K through 3.
K through 3. That's right. If a boy doesn't know how to learn by the third grade, he'll be in the juvenile justice system, and the young woman will likely be pregnant. And those are outcomes we don't want.
And those are-- We recently taped David Lawrence at the Kiwanis, and you know, he's, you know, the leader in this, and his position was that K through 3 is a critical age, you know, to instill learning and good habits and everything at that point in time. Ms. Carpenter, we're kind of winding down a little bit on time, and I want you to take an opportunity, if you may, to talk to the community, and say, "Obviously, there are a lot of people who are disturbed, concerned, and to a point, just wondering how a school district that had so many things going for it, had, you know, these array of problems." And given the opportunity, how would you like to, what would you say to the, not only to your staff and your faculties, but to the community at large, and how, and what you're doing to solve this?
Well, I could talk a little bit about my journey as a school board member. And I was elected August 24th, 2010, and I have a background in being responsible with money, and providing transparency, both in the nonprofit and for-profit sector. And I had a great deal of frustration, experienced frustration in getting information, which was a red flag to me. But I was not believed. And so, this is not a good place to be for me, to say, "I told you so," because I take no joy in it.
That's true.
But there was something wrong. You know, I've been on this earth almost seven decades, and you know, 45 years in management, and it just didn't seem like it was, the numbers weren't right, and there was something not right, especially when you can't get the information. Information was withheld. And the night of September 10th, I did get very angry, because I felt that trust had been betrayed, and I blew my stack that night, and said everybody should be fired in the Finance Department, and I'm sorry I said that, because I don't think they were the ones that were doing the problem. But I think that anger doesn't do any of us any good.
That's true.
You know, and harnessing your anger, and to fix the problem, the stakes are too important, the children are too important. Education in Manatee County needs all the help that it can get. We know we have violated people's trust, and we know employees are fearful. And I think everybody needs, myself included, to take a deep breath and say, "We will fix this, we can fix this, we can rebuild trust, we can get correct information, I think we'll attract a good superintendent, and we will move forward, all of us, on, to a better place." We need the community's help. I'm grateful that we have all the people serving on the Superintendent's Committee. We have other areas that people can help, whether volunteering--
At school.
At school.
Mentoring.
Mentoring. There are all sorts of ways that people can get involved. You know, I'm sure we'll always have critics out there. I've moved from being a critic to having to saw, help solve the problems. And we know our, our watchdog has moved inside, so, but we're going to maintain our vigilance. You know, I was not the only person being a critic, the Vice Chair, Mrs. Ranabro was, too. And so, we're all in there solving the problem.
And, you know, hats off to you, and to the board, you know, for trying to, you know, put your arms around a problem that sometimes, you know, for most people, would seem insurmountable. And one of the things also, and we're going to put that information up on the screen, is that you would encourage people to contact you if they have a comment, or have a question--
Suggestions, yeah.
--or anything like that. And Ms. Carpenter's address is up on the screen, carpenter2k@manateeschools.net. If you have a comment, please contact Ms. Carpenter. First of all, as the new Chair of the Manatee County School Board, a lot of the responsibility's going to fall on your shoulders for the leadership and the guidance that the rest of the school board-- of the school board is going to have to continue. And we hope and we know that your outlook and your approach and your inclusion of things is going to help solve these problems. And I want to thank you very much, Ms. Carpenter, for taking the time, you know, to address the community, you know, to kind of allay some of their concerns, because it is a lot of information that's coming out that the school board needs to approach.
Thank you. Thank you. And thanks to METV for all the work you do in sharing information.
I appreciate that. And thank you for joining us on this special edition of Up Close on METV.